All right, so you're pretty familiar with how to convert decimals, right?
Yeah, a little bit.
Okay, so you know, converting them to a percentage, if it's 6%, you move it over two spots, and it'll be .06. Same thing. If you see .06, that's 6%. So you can convert those decimals pretty easy. Let me get these people in. Admit all. Admit. So, so that's essentially the basics of your decimal percentage conversions. And then once you go beyond that, you're, you'll be looking at like the T. And this is really kind of a big deal when it comes to your, all your like math problems, like this is the, the formula that you're gonna use more often than not. So. So what you're seeing here is when it's like, you know, the total, the part, the total, total, the part and the rate. And the way it works is you're gonna use it for figuring out the value of homes, multiplication problems, knowing how to divide. And we'll jump ahead a little bit. There we go. So it's a part, total, and rate. And so, you know, you take the part, and this is a division, so you take the part divided by rate, and that gives you the total. And then if you take the total times the rate, it gives you the part. And then if you take the part divided by the total, it gives you the rate. So you're just basically, you're putting in the parts that you know about whatever the, the problem is. If you know the, the part that goes up here, if you know the rate that goes down here, if you know the total, it goes here. And that's how you figure these out. So going this way to figure out the top is a multiplication. Figuring out either one of these is a division problem. So is that making sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, hang on. These YouTube videos, not a subscriber. All right. Yeah, so this is like, we always used it as a circle when I learned it originally. But again, it's, the T works just as well. And again, you're just putting in the part that you know about the problem. And then using this helps you figure out the part that's missing. So they're always gonna give you like two parts of this, and then you have to figure out where they go and what's missing. So based on this, you know, if I were looking for the part, what would I need to do? That's a question to you all. If I were looking for the part, what do I have to do?
Multiply the total and the rate.
Correct. And if I were looking for the rate, what would I need to do?
A total divided by part, or no, I'm sorry, I always get this part mixed up.
So it's part divided by total.
Part divided.
So you're taking the top number, dividing it by the bottom. So if, so think of it as a division symbol. You're taking whatever's on top, dividing it by whatever's underneath, and that gives you the, whatever's on the other side. So they're giving you an option here, you know, to solve a percentage problem, you have three possible questions. So one, the question you're gonna have is what is the total amount if you know the percentage rate and part of the total amount? And then, so that's, you know, so you know, you know the part, and you know the percent, the to percentage rate, so you're gonna do what you just said to do. You're gonna multiply those two, and that's gonna give you, well, you're gonna take the part and the rate, and that's gonna give you the total. So divide the part by the rate. So I had it backwards, divided by the part by the rate. So here they're saying, what's the percent rate if you know the total amount and the part of the total amount? So we know the percent rate is .06. And the part is six out of 100. It's a weird way to word that. Total times rate equals part. Yeah, total times rate equals part. They're wording it very weird.
Sometimes when I'm, when I'm doing these, that's, that's one of the problems that I'm having, trying to make sure the part and the total, because it's kind of easy to figure out what the rate is, but the part and the total, I sometimes get confused.
Well, let's, let's look at this question. A salesperson received $3,000 for selling a house. This was 40% of the total commission of the sale of a $200,000 house. What was the commission rate on the sale? So we know the total, and we know the part. So in this situation, you would take that $3,000. All right, so I'm gonna take 3,000, and I know that's 40%. So that's gonna be $7,500 commission, right? So it's a $7,500 commission on a $200,000 property. So we need to find out what was the commission rate. So we take 3.75%. So we know that it was 40%, and let's, let's see if I did my math right. All right. So here's how, here's how the math worked out. So you take the 3,000, and we know that's 40%, so you divide it by .4, and that gives you the total commission of 7,500. And then you figure the commission rate, so that's the part, so we put the 7,500 at the top. All right, and we know the total for the house is 200,000, so we put 200,000 here. So we're gonna take the 7,500, divide it by the 200,000, and then that gives you the rate of 3.75. It'll come out as .0375, and then you move the decimal place to make it a percentage. Does that make sense on how that question was? And, and again, they added another piece of math in there. They didn't give you the total commission, which they were asking for, so you had to do that extra step. Does that make sense to everyone? You want me to go back and show you the question again, or? Are we all good to move forward? Because again, this is how it was asked. Salesperson received $3,000 for selling a house. This was 40% of the total commission on the sale of a 200,000 house. What was the commission rate on the sale? So that's how you got to that. Let's see, they give you another question in here. I'm gonna just work through the math on that. I was hoping they'd give you another question in here. All right, they don't. But yeah, that's essentially how you use that, that T, and that's a really important one in how to do a lot of the math and, and the real estate exam is using the T. So just, you know, the, the best thing you can do is when you get into the room, they're gonna give you like a sheet of paper that you can use as scrap to take notes or, you know, do whatever you need to do on. I would just write that equation down, you know, part, total, rate, and then that way you can plug it in whenever you come to any of those kinds of questions. You just basically plug it into the, the thing. So just remember the T and where everything goes on the T. Write it down immediately when you get into the room, and then you have that as part of your, you know, not necessarily a cheat sheet, but what you can use to kind of go off of. All right. So let's take a look at where does everybody seem to be having trouble? I know I've seen some, some people say they, they just missed the national, or they're having, they're struggling a little bit on the national or state. Where's the best opportunity for us today? Put it in the chat, say it out loud. National, state, where are we feeling like we've got the biggest area of growth needed to get past the test? It's a quiet group tonight. National, there we go. All right. All right, so let's look at. So the national, that's got four sections that are gonna be important. You've got your general principles of agencies, your practice of real estate. Let's actually just do practice of real estate. Because that's gonna be the actual important stuff that you're gonna have to kind of go through, is what does it mean to actually do the practice of real estate? You all can still see my screen, correct? All right, let's jump in and get a game going. Use your phones to get the QR code and hop into the game, and let's, let's look at the practice of real estate. Got a couple people in. So that's two out of the seven. Everybody else on their phones and not able to participate, or we roll in with two.
I have to download the app.
Oh, it's making you download an app? Because you can go to, you can directly go to it from Kahoot.it as well and not use the app. So if you have a web browser on your phone, you could do that.
Okay, thank you.
So who's got their test coming up? Who's scheduled?
I am.
Is that Yolanda? You've got yours scheduled?
Yes.
When are you testing?
Friday.
Nice, nice. And did you have, did you get those links that I shared before with the YouTube links and from the previous exams?
I got them, but I could only get into two.
On YouTube, really?
Yes.
That's weird. All right.
I've been watching the same ones over and over.
Which, was it the 2020 and the 21?
The math. And actually, I can see the days, the two classes that I've been in. I can see those also.
All right, interesting. All right, well, we're gonna get going. All right. So, practice of real estate. Comingling refers to what? Think about what the word is saying, co-mingle. Way to go. Although it was only one person answered out of the three. So think about it as when you mingle, when you go out and mix, like at a party or anything like that, you're mixing, you're, you're mingling with other people. So co-mingling is talking about funds that are deposited into the wrong account. So it's mixing trust account funds with your, you know, either business account or your personal account. You can't mix the money. So always when you see the word co-mingle, it means that something is being mixed, and it's typically refers to money. So if there's, if you take an earnest money deposit or anything like that, you're gonna need to make sure that you have it in a trust account, because you do not want to mix the money. So co-mingle means mix, mixing of money. So just remember that anytime you see that, that it's gonna be mixing of money, co-mingling. All right, question two. In the 1968 landmark US Supreme Court case of Jones versus Alfred H. Mayer, it ruled that the Fair Housing Act is void, sexual preference is now a protected class in fair housing laws, racial discrimination in property sales is prohibited, no exceptions, or state law shall take precedence over federal Fair Housing Act. All right. So we're gonna look at that rationale. So interpret the Civil Rights Act of 1866, not the Federal Fair Housing Act. So when it comes to racial discrimination in the rental sale of housing and personal property, there are no exceptions or exemptions to the 1866 law, even though there were four exceptions in the 1968 act. So that's what it's saying. There is no exceptions when it comes to racial discrimination in property sales. And, you know, the other ones, a lot of times in these questions, you can kind of eliminate some. You know, when you say the Fair Housing Act is void, well, we know the Fair Housing Act isn't void. State laws will take precedence over Federal Fair Housing Act. Federal out, federal law takes precedence over state law. So two of those you can eliminate right off, and then sexual preference was not a protected class in federal fair housing laws. All right, Rita. Okay, a broker or salesperson's refusal to cooperate with other brokers because of race is prohibited by the Civil Rights Act of 1844, Executive Order 1068, Presidential Fair Housing Act of 73, or Federal Fair Housing Law of 68. So federal fair housing law was 1968. All right, we're getting some other participants in there, good. So, and again, the Civil Rights Act that was 1866, so the date is wrong on that one. And then Presidential Fair Housing Act, there was no federal Presidential Fair Housing Act of 73. It is the Federal Fair Housing Act of 68, 68. And so that's the one you're gonna look to when it says that, you know, you have to cooperate with other brokers, federal fair housing law. So 68 Fair Housing Law. All right. Let's keep it moving. Good job, Rita. Which property is most likely to be exempt from federal fair housing laws? A single-family home sold by a real estate agent, single-family home rented by the owner, a four-unit flat rented by a real estate agent, or an apartment complex with a single owner? All right, so we got one and one there. So when, once it's, once you've got multi-units, it, it does change the, the rules. So a single-family home rented by the owner is what is exempt from the federal fair housing laws. Because it's your property, you're renting it, as long as you are not an agent, you know, there are no laws to prohibit you from saying who can and cannot rent your property. So as long as it's a single-family home, because once you get into an apartment complex, now you run into issues of federal fair housing laws, because you've got multiple units. And yes, a real estate agent can never discriminate. So if you are, you know, always remember the, the saying, you are a real estate, once you're licensed, you're a real estate agent 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So you're, you're never exempt from any of the fair housing laws, you're never exempt from ethics violations. You are always held accountable to those standards. A real estate agent authorized to prepare a bar association's pre-printed real estate contract form, a pre-printed lease agreement for the seller to sign, a real estate sales contract, or a pre-printed land contract form available through a legal publishing mark. So yes, number one, so it has to be a form that is, you know, from the bar association. So it has to be a legal form from the bar, and pre-printed, you cannot write up anything, because that is the unauthorized practice of law. And so when they say prepare, think prepare always means to write. So you can't prepare, so you can't prepare a real estate contract because you can't write one. Now, if it's pre-printed real estate contract form, yes, you can do that. And if it's a lease agreement for the seller to sign, you're preparing a lease agreement, it's, even though it's pre-printed, if it's a seller doing a lease, that's up to them to fill out. They would have to fill out that lease agreement, not the agent. And then land contract form, same thing, especially from a legal publishing mark, because it's not actually legal, it's not from the bar. And anytime I'm going through these, feel free to stop and ask questions, or anything like that. Real estate licensee needs to have a legal experience as a practicing lawyer, an in-depth understanding of constitutional law, a broad understanding of law and how it affects real estate, or little understanding of law because competent attorneys are available. What do you need? That's right, a broad understanding. So you, you need a general understanding of how things work. You know, yes, attorneys aren't always available. And at the same time, in order to protect your clients, you need a general understanding. Again, don't, don't do the unauthorized practice of law. Just make sure you have an understanding of the general concepts. All right, TJ on the move. Which law mandates how much a real estate broker can charge for a commission? No such laws exist due to Sherman antitrust act violation, state law, federal law, or city ordinance. So which law? Correct. Sherman antitrust, same thing with talking with other agents about commission and what they charge and things like that. You would be in violation of the Sherman antitrust act if you were to discuss those things. Someone's trying to get in. They're coming in by the phone. All right. So everyone got that? The Civil Rights Act of 1866 established which as a protected class? Race, sex, age, or religion. Civil rights, 1866. That one's gonna be pretty easy. All right, everybody got it. Yes, civil rights, 1866 was about race. Hey, Pete, welcome. Okay, question nine. Which could a real estate agent lawfully prepare? A land contract, general warranty deed, a lease with option, or none of those? We just kind of went over that. What can they prepare? What can they lawfully prepare? None of these, correct. So again, you are not authorized to prepare documents unless they are pre-printed documents from the bar association that you are just basically filling in the blanks. And whenever they write prepare, think, think of it to mean that you are writing the document. So not just filling in blanks, that you're actually writing the document and creating it. So that is the unauthorized practice of law. So always, we are not allowed to do that. Many states have imposed the canons of ethics, and the Board of Realtors promulgated of the Code of Ethics in order to keep part-timers out of the business, generate revenue, reduce the number of agents entering the profession, or ensure professionalism in the practice of real estate. So why did they do it? Why do they have the Code of Ethics? That's right. So ensure professionalism. By which system can real estate brokers share listings and commissions on listings sold jointly? The MLS, MIP, APR, or PMI? That's right, MLS. So MIP is just mortgage insurance protection. Same thing with PMI, primary mortgage insurance. So, you know, those are just two different versions of mortgage insurance. One is for FHA, and the other one is for conventional loans. And then APR is annual percentage rate. So, you know, your, your one is your multiple listing service, and that's your answer there. So that's where the historical data of all property that was sold, listed and sold is gonna be held. So that's your MLS, and that's, and I'll, I'll tell you what, the MLS is the And that's, and I'll tell you what, the MLS is the distinction that you have between you and the public. That anybody can go on and see what's for sale right now, or what's sold, you know, on Zillow or Trulia or any of those things. But you have all the historical data right there at your fingertips on the MLS, which they don't have. They're not able to do that. Hey, Pete, you must have a weird connection and keep getting kicked out. An illegal act that encourages homeowners to sell due to minorities moving into the neighborhood is called redlining, panic buying, blockbusting, or steering? And so it is blockbusting. Now, and a note on blockbusting, that has to be on a listing agreement. So blockbusting is the one item on here that would be mandatory on any listing agreement to say that you're not allowed to do that. So when we talk about steering, it's, it's, it's when you're basically, it's not about moving, a minority moving into the neighborhood. Steering was about moving people out of, out of other neighborhoods that they might ask about. Or if they say, hey, I don't want to live in a neighborhood with this kind of demographic, that's steering. You are not allowed to participate in that. Now, blockbusting was when they would actually find homeowners to get them to sell because they were saying, so steering is more about buyers. Blockbusting is about sellers. So that's the distinction here. So when they're selling, because they fear that the neighborhood's gonna go down, that's blockbusting because they sell and then they're able to get the, you know, drive the price down and then raise the price for the new people moving in. So blockbusting is sellers, steering is buyers. Robert ran a full-page ad featuring his listings describing one as perfect for empty nesters. Robert's ad will attract high-quality buyers, should please the owners, is likely to get a quick sale, is potentially violating fair housing law. Which do you think it is? Yes, fair housing law. Because it's familial status. So always be careful of the words you use. You know, like a great backyard for the family or for the kids or, you know, you could be talking about something that you think is benign and at the same time could be in violation. So always be mindful of, you know, the words you use. Same thing with like, you know, listing a church down the street or, you know, excellent schools or any of those kind of words. You know, you can't make judgments on that. Which type of contract could a real estate agent lawfully create from scratch? Lease, land contract, real estate purchase contract, or none of these answers? Right, none of those answers. So when you see questions come up more than once, know that that means that it's probably gonna come up in a different way on your exam. Just because they want to make sure you have a really good understanding that you are not allowed to do that. So unauthorized practice of law is a big thing. A potential buyer asking an agent whether a general warranty deed or a quitclaim deed is better. What should the agent say? The agent may not answer as it involves unauthorized practice of law? General warranty deed, special warranty deed, or quitclaim deed? Which one's better? All right, there we go. We're getting an unauthorized practice of law. An exception to the federal fair housing law is discrimination based on ethnicity, the basis of sex, economic considerations, or religion? Right, economic considerations. So ethnicity, it says an exception to the Fair Housing Act law is discrimination based on. So you can't, there is no exception when it comes to race. Now, economic considerations, absolutely. If you can't afford to buy a house, then you can be discriminated against and say you can't afford it. So if, you know, that's the difference there. When a buyer asks an agent what form of co-ownership he and his wife should take, the agent should recommend tenancy by the entirities, recommend joint and survivorship, recommend tenancy in common, not make any recommendations. Yes, you all got it right. All right. We're all getting the unauthorized practice of law thing down. A broker must keep records of all funds from the broker's special trust account, which is not included. Amounts received, client's social security numbers, dates funds are received, or check numbers and dates funds are dispersed. Right, social security numbers. You don't need to keep those. So, yeah, you would need to document all the times that there were amounts received, that funds were received, and then, you know, when they're dispersed as well. So you would need to keep track of all that for three years. Social security numbers, you do not need to keep. Hang on, we got somebody coming in? All right. Rita's crushing it. The term caveat emptor literally translates as there's a hole in the exterior. Let the buyer beware, long live the king, or Caesar is emptor. Caveat emptor. So caveat emptor is buyer beware. And you've all got that one. So buyer beware, let the buyer beware. And that, you know, essentially, everybody understands that one is that you're, you're buying the property. Once you go through the process, you know, it's, it's yours no matter what happens. If you sign the documents, you are taking it and it's as-is condition. Now, you can negotiate up until the point you sign a final closing statement or the closing disclosure. Once you transfer property, it doesn't matter what's wrong with that property. You have the chance to examine it. Let the buyer beware. So caveat emptor. Under the Federal Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight, it is permissible to tell an individual that an apartment has been rented when in fact it has not, advertise property for sale only to a special group, alter the terms of a loan for a member of the minority, or refuse to get a loan to an individual because he has poor credit history. Just like before, it is gonna be economic consideration and that's it. All right. Number three, Mo. Number two, TJ, and Rita, way out in the lead. So, you know, like, like I've said before, your national is gonna be fifty-three, your eighty questions are your practice of real estate, general principles, contracts, and finances. So, you know, that's the majority of the questions that they're gonna ask you in the national portion of the exam. So again, you've got the contracts, excuse me, finances, general principles, and practice of real estate. Those are gonna be your four options where fifty-three of the eighty questions are gonna come from. If you study those four sections and really kind of nail those down, you have a very good chance of passing because that's the majority of the questions. And the state, it's going to be license laws and rules, and then brokerage relationships. Thirty of the forty questions are gonna be based on those two categories. License laws and rules and brokerage relationships. So you've got quite a bit that you can study that will help you. And I'm gonna pull up something else. We were talking about the, someone said they couldn't get into the YouTube video, so I just want to check it real quick. All right. All right, so this is the twenty-twenty-one exam. I'm gonna share my screen again. All right, so we're gonna start back here. Of course, it's gonna make me play these. All right. These are pretty basic questions. Ohio real estate license, I mean, you shall know these. Okay, we're gonna skip that. So what information would be unethical for a listing agent to share with a potential buyer? So you can throw your answers in the chat or call them out loud. Which one would be unethical?
Letter D.
Okay. All right, so we got D. So let's see. So yes. So now here's, here's the thing about this, though. It's inappropriate for the listing agent to tell the buyer's personal, to tell the prospective buyer personal information. Now, if you're the buyer's agent and you know that information, your job is your client's, your client's, you know, well-being. So you're the fiduciary for your client. So if you're a buyer's agent, any information you know, if you've never been in contract with that listing agent, you don't have the job of not disclosing that. So if you know that the seller is eager for an offer because he lost a job and found a new one, unless that seller, unless that listing agent is with your firm, because then you would be a dual agent and you wouldn't be allowed to disclose that. But if, if they're from another firm and you happen to know that, not from being signed to that seller, it's fair game to say. You just can't say it if you're signed to that seller, have ever been signed to that person because confidentiality is forever. So confidentiality is forever. All right, the subdivision has a rule that each home in the neighborhood be at least twenty-five hundred square feet. This is an example of which concept? Cooperative ownership, fair housing laws violation, restrictive covenant, or homestead laws? So A, B, C, or D? So we've got A, D, D. Okay, so if they have a twenty-five hundred square foot rule, it's actually gonna be a restrictive covenant. So it's restrictive covenant. So covenants are, think about covenants as being like attached to like the title. So it can, and actually restrictive covenants were once used to separate neighborhoods for race. And it was deemed illegal. And so they stopped using restrictive covenants for that reason. But a covenant goes with the property. So restrictive covenants are, they're usually done by developers or homeowners associations. You know, and actually it was zoning that was deemed illegal. Zoning was deemed to be legal. And then once they figured out they couldn't do it through zoning, they did it through restrictive covenant. Because that's not by any nominated or voted on party. It's through the neighborhood. And so, you know, that's how you maintain, think about HOAs or things like that. They're the ones that put restrictive covenants on neighborhoods. So if there's a homeowners association, a lot of times there are gonna be restrictive covenants. Definitely look into that whenever you see a homeowner, an HOA. You definitely want to look into restrictive covenants to make sure that your buyers are getting what they want and not gonna have a bad situation. So what's a transaction brokerage? So just a transaction brokerage? All right. Okay. So we're getting Ds. All right, so transaction brokerage is letter D. They represent neither party. They have what general information? All right. How much is intangible tax on a real estate purchase mortgage? That's a weird question. So we'll go to the answer on it. So intangible tax is point zero zero two multiplied by the total mortgage. Here's the thing, I've never even, I've never seen intangible tax. So, you know, apparently it was on the Ohio real estate exam in twenty-twenty-one. But that's really the thing. Sometimes there are things on there that you never see. You know, and that's the bad part about it. And the good part is you only need a seventy percent. And a lot of times these questions are gonna be one-offs that you'll never see. And, you know, even if you get it wrong, it, it's just so it doesn't really matter. So an agency contract is being terminated. In which scenario might there be damages owed to one of the parties? So which scenario might there be damages owed? A, a lot of As in there, D. So really, discharging the agent, I mean, you can fire an agent, all that stuff is fine. It's really gonna come down to the agent resigns from the contract because he has overloaded with home sell. So they may be liable for breach of contract at that point. So it's D. You know, it wouldn't be considered a justifiable reason. You know, so they could go, you know, they can go after damages because they said, hey, we had a contract. You agreed to sell my home, and then you backed out for no legitimate reason. So D. Foreclosure occurs when a what blank seizes and sells a borrower's blank after the borrower's failed to blank the lender. A, B, C, or D? Correct. So lender collateral, the collateral is the house and then repay. So collateral is the property. So a buyer agrees to purchase a home once the sale of the current home is completed. Legally, this is known as contingency. So you know, just always keep a lookout. If you have a seller and you get a document saying someone wants to buy your home and it's a contingent sale, it means that they have to sell another property in order to buy the one that they're in contract for. And you can do it the other way and say it's a contingent sale if you, if you don't find another property, if the seller doesn't find another property to purchase. All right, Mr. And Mrs. Cox make Mr. And Mrs. Green an offer on their home, but they have not heard back from them on whether or not the offer has been accepted. In the meantime, they have found another home they would like to purchase instead. What is their best option? A, B, C, or D? Withdraw their offer with penalty, modify their offer to one they're confident they will not accept, withdraw their offer with no penalty, wait for Mr. And Green's response. If they accept the offer, pay the withdrawal fee outlined in the contract. What makes the most sense? Got some D's. So it, it's really going to be C. There's no penalty because they haven't heard back from them. They've made an offer. So you know, if you haven't heard back from them, you're not in contract. So the best thing to do is withdraw the offer because that way you can just walk away from it and you don't have to worry about it. Once there is a response, you are in contract and then there would be a penalty or a fee. And then same thing with B. They don't, you know, why modify the offer? Just withdraw it. Reversion of title is a feature of what type of interest? Fee simple, fee simple condition precedent, fee simple condition subsequent, fee simple determinable? Which one is it? Reversion of title. I think I got a C in there. Maybe that was, that was the last one. No one's answered this one. So this one's a tough one for everybody. All right, so fee simple determinable. So subsequent allows the right of reentry because you can go to court and reclaim the property. And fee simple determinable, the title reverts back to the grantor if the condition isn't met. So think about, if you sell a property and you say this, you have to buy it on this condition, then if that condition isn't met, then even though that person has gone through the process or paid or done whatever, the title can be reverted back to the initial seller. So reversion of title is fee simple determinable. We'll have to watch a short thing. Oh, we have to actually watch it now? There we go. All right. Lumber for a deck that has not yet been built is personal property. So anything that's on the property that is not affixed to the property or appears to be part of the property is, is determined personal property. So I'm sure you hear the dog outside. All right, so we got five minutes left. So again, this is, you know, for those who are looking for things to look for and study, this is the actual 2021 questions from the exam. So you know, you can go through and kind of go through, this is 60 questions off the exam. Exam's 120 questions. So the transfer disclosure statement form is required on the sale of a one to four unit residential property. So TDS forms. And then same thing with like, you know, when a purchase agreement states the property is being sold as is, what does that mean? We got any answers on this one? They're stating the property is sold as is. D. Okay. So you actually have to make disclosures, even if you say it's as is, you require it to disclose. So the answer is really A. So you know, you still, still requires the buyer to receive a transfer disclosure statement and you know, noting any material facts which affect the property's value. So, and if it's not a multi-unit, it's just the residential property disclosure. So we call it an RPD as opposed to the TDS, residential property disclosure. So I'm going to put the link to this in the in the chat. That way you all have a chance to take a look at it and finish it out. But yeah, it's 60 of the questions and some of the wording, like I said, is a little weird. They, you know, and at the same time, it's a good place to get some extra practice and learning what's going to be on there. So, and as always, these are recorded. So we did math last week and I think we did like state the week before. So if you want to go back and watch some of the older ones, you can go back and take a look and see like, you know, some of the stuff you may have missed. And you know, we'll go back to, I think we'll go back to the comp rammer probably next week and just go over some, some more questions off of there. Today we did a little bit of math upfront. Then we did the general practice of real estate and just went over some of these questions from the, from the YouTube video on the 2021 Ohio State License Exam. So you know, definitely take a look at some of the older stuff. And there are plenty of resources out here as well as what we're providing that can help you. And if there's something in particular that you're struggling with or have questions about, feel free to drop me an email, reach out, and I may have resources that I can provide for you that'll help you get past whatever it is that you're, you know, needing help or growth around. And you know, I want you to pass just as much as you do.